I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for October the 3rd. Thank you all for coming. Our first order of business is an invocation by our manager, Ms. Sharon Griffin.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Bright and Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, be with the commissioners in their deliberations and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on today's agenda. Be especially with those who have been devastated by Hurricane Ian. Guard their hearts and minds. Give them peace that surpasses all understanding. Bless the work of relief agencies and those providing emergency assistance. Father, we pray for our military and first responders who continue to serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge with Mr. Ben Warren, our Assistant County Manager.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome some of the elected officials here today. Sheriff Hans Miller from Onslow County Sheriff's Office, Mr. Rick Grant from North Toppsil Beach, Alderman, and Mr. Josh Dobson, Department of Labor, this year to give us some, present some awards today for Department of Labor. We ask all in attendance to please set your cell phone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control of. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner of Comment period on the agenda, which is at the end of the meeting. With no other items being considered separately, a motion to adopt the meeting agenda is in order.
Motion approved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Any item on the consent agenda that members have questions that would like to have it removed for later discussion? Here is none. Could I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Some move.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now, I think I missed somebody. Ms. Charman here? Good morning, amiga. Thank you for coming. You were hiding behind Rick. That's why he's not at the theater. So anyway, we are now at the public comment section. Ms. Griffin, do you have anybody signed up?
Mr. Chairman, we have no one signed up today for public comment.
Okay, we'll move on with proclamation. I'll turn that over again to our county manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Today we have a proclamation recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'll read it into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas it is expected in the United States for more than 287,000 women and 2,800 men to be diagnosed with breast cancer by the end of 2022, and whereas 6,000 North Carolinians are diagnosed yearly resulting in over 1,000 deaths, and whereas 1 in 8 women and nearly 1 in 100 men are at risk of developing breast cancer, we are encouraged to know that there are significant advancements in various treatment options to aid in lowering the mortality rate of this disease. And whereas the awareness of breast cancer continues to be spread, individuals are encouraged to regularly meet with their physicians and practice preventative measures to decrease risk and become more knowledgeable about signs of breast cancer for screening and treatment. And whereas this month we celebrate the incredible resilience of survivors and we honor those whose lives were tragically cut short by breast cancer, and as we stand with their families, we continue to equip ourselves with the best knowledge, tools, and resources available to fight this devastating disease. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize this October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and encourages all women and their families to increase their knowledge about breast cancer. Join us to celebrate the success of those that overcame breast cancer and remember those that lost their battle. Presented the third day of October 2022 by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners, Chairman Bright has requested that Vice Chairman Foster present this award and our fabulous Onslow County Health Department is here to accept.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. If I just said how I was impacted with our family with breast cancer, I would be speaking on behalf of everybody in this room today because just about everyone alive knows someone that has suffered from breast cancer. And this is significant to understand the awareness of meeting with your physician and making sure we continue that course to make sure we are aware of what's taking place to save lives. And I think it's important to reiterate where we mentioned in the proclamation, the resilience of survivors. Not only resilience of the survivors, but the caretakers as well, and honor those whose lives were tragically cut short. So let's remember that today as we maintain awareness of breast cancer, not only in the month of October, but monthly, monthly throughout the year so we can save lives and protect families. Thank you for today and coming out today, and we appreciate all that you do in the Health Department.
Thank you so much. Hi, my name is Michelle Killian and I accept this proclamation. Thank you so much. I am the Women's Health Nurse Supervisor. Breast cancer affects 1 in every 8 women just here in the United States. Every 2 minutes, a woman is diagnosed with breast cancer. That is, like he said, we all know some 1. We all know 8 women. We do have a fantastic program at our Onslow Consolidated Services. It is called BSEP. It is our Breast Cancer and Cervical Cancer Program. It's a prevention program. That service is for the underinsured or no insurance women that come in. Their age group is from 40 to 60. We have approximately seen about 50 women since the fiscal year that we have screened. And it is an awesome program. So, thank you very much. I really appreciate everything you all do. And just, I, as far as the citizens, I'm 1. I just thank everything that you support, everybody with this special need. And I thank you for continuing to do that. Thank you very much.
I think that's Ms. Chrissy Hoover will give us a presentation on Community Health Needs Assessment. Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and our Commissioners. The item that I'm bringing you today is our 2021 Community Health Needs Assessment. The Health Department partners with the hospital to conduct community health assessments. And I want to give you a little bit of background of why we do this. Community health assessments and assessment is a core function of public health. It's also required by our North Carolina Health Department accreditation requirements. We're here today to share the outcomes of this community health needs assessment and to help inform the community of the priorities that were identified in the assessment that we've just completed. The Affordable Care Act made this an IRS requirement for tax-exempt hospitals, and so this really strengthened the partnership that the Health Department has with Onslow Memorial, and we do this, this community health assessment together. And because it's best practice, because we need to know what our key health needs are and to look at our data to determine what kind of programming we should be doing. This represents our fifth comprehensive community health needs assessment. The ones that we did in 2008 and 2012 were kind of that pre Affordable Care Act era, and we used to do them every four years. Now, since we were partnered with the hospital as one of the requirements of the hospital, we have shifted to a three-year cycle, and our most recent one was conducted in 2021. The Community Health Advisory Team is the multidisciplinary community team that is made up of healthcare and human service partners in our community, looks at transportation, housing, a myriad of other community partners and community services. We also have representatives from the faith community and nonprofit organizations. The chat team carries out the review of the data from the surveys that are conducted as part of this assessment. We call those surveys primary data. What we hear from the people themselves is our primary data. As well as the review of secondary data are those published data sources that come from CDC or the Center for State Health Statistics. This shows you the brief ranking of what our citizens indicated on that survey were the top quality of life issues. They, they put the most emphasis on low income and poverty, alcohol and drug use, and affordable housing. These surveys were conducted last summer from April to the end of June and collected almost 800 surveys. They were available publicly. There was online and in a paper format, and we did do some canvassing in the community to try to make sure that we were getting a representative voice of our community. Here's another breakdown of some of the survey questions that were asked, and what you would see from this slide is that most of the county agrees that Onslow County is a good place to raise children, a good place to grow old, a safe place to live. The top 3 health behaviors that, that people identified as the community needing more information about was mental and behavioral health, eating well and nutrition, substance use, and suicide prevention. And then we'll shift into the review of our secondary data, so published data and how Onslow County compares to other areas in the eastern north, eastern part of our state as well as the overall state. So you can see here, here are our leading causes of death, and there's not too much movement in those top leading causes of death. The one thing that I would point out that, that you don't see in North Carolina's top 10 or in other eastern North Carolina counties is suicide, where suicide ranks 8th for Onslow County. We've talked before about how we have several different sources for data, and we have shared with the community and with you gentlemen, the county health rankings. And this is just a, another spot to look at it and to say that that is some of the data that we use whenever we are assessing our county's health. This was the, the graph that are the grid that will show you some areas that we have real strength in, the ones that are highlighted in green, the ones that are yellow here, particularly when we look at the health behaviors domain, are the areas that we could explore that we need to focus and, and make some progress in. Again, the chat team reviews that survey data, that primary data, as, as well as the published data. And then from there, they select health priorities and create community health improvement plans. In December, that team met and they did select health priorities, and that's what you see here on this slide. The priorities that they selected were data and evaluation, what are, how are we measuring our health data? What should we be looking at? They also selected mental and behavioral health, and you see that identified from those health behaviors that we saw on the published data as well as what our community members told us in their survey data. In that domain, we focus on substance use and tobacco use as well as adverse childhood experiences. The third area are health equity and health disparities, chronic disease and preventive care. The fourth area is healthy living. That's where that nutrition and access to healthy eating comes into play. And then the fifth area is physical activity and exercise, making sure that we have resources available for citizens to partake in physical activity. Those priorities that we listed are what we will develop action plans for, for the next 3 years and we will focus on. And so we want to share this with the community and make sure that they understand the work that this community health advisory team does. We also want to invite them to read the full document. It is available on the Health Department's website under the Community tab. It is 113 pages, so take your time, pace yourself with that one. But we also want to, to share this information and to let others know if you have an interest in working on improving health in our community, the chat team is a, is a wonderful way to get involved with that. You can learn about classes that are available in our community, not just at our Health Department, but with other organizations that are represented on the chat, and make sure that, that you are sharing with others how to, how, how, how health improves the community and the benefits of having a strong public health system in the community. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, but that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Eastern North Carolina used to be a part of what they called the stroke belt and because of the large number of strokes that were, were in comparison to the rest of the country. Have we made strides in that area in Onslow County?
So I think that's something that, that, you know, a lot of the healthcare systems have really focused on. I mean, even whenever we think about our EMS systems and whenever you take a stroke patient to a hospital, that's something where there has really been a tremendous focus on quality care and recognizing that time is brain whenever it comes to people who are having strokes. That was one of those areas where we realized that chronic disease and that we had a health disparity when it came to stroke care. And so there's been a tremendous focus on that in the recent years. And I think that if we looked at the data, you know, across the area, we would still see that we are probably on the lower end of that. But that is something that eastern North Carolina has been very focused on and continues to work towards, and that's why we do community health assessments, is to drive the programming and, and to help our healthcare leaders in different domains focus on those priorities.
But the numbers probably haven't changed that, that much, you're saying?
I don't think that they've probably changed all that much, and we could look into that specifically, and I'll be happy to do that and, and send that data specifically to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any further? Here is none. Thank you, Ms. Hoover.
All right, thank you.
Did a good job. I will now turn Item C over to our county manager to induce, introduce our Commissioner of Labor and give the awards.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners and everyone here today that's with us, we're very excited to have the opportunity today to celebrate safety in our workplace and all the efforts that have been done. I would, before I present this, I'd like for John Basery to stand up, if he would. John is our Safety Officer, and since his time with us, he has reduced our OSHA recordables by 30%. He is doing amazing things with our safety team, and we so appreciate everything that John does for the organization. The North Carolina Department of Labor Safety Awards Program is administered through its Education, Training, and Technical Assistance Bureau of the Occupational Safety and Health Division. Through the Safety Awards Program, private and public firms that achieve and maintain good safety records are recognized. This program is designed to stimulate interest in accident prevention and to promote safety in the workplace by providing an incentive to employers and employees to maintain a safe and helpful workplace. Two levels of awards are given, gold and silver, and are based on either days away from work, restricted activity, or job transfers due to workplace injuries. To qualify for an annual safety award, each of the departments you're going to hear announced in just a moment, number 1, have no fatalities during the calendar year at the site or location for which the award was given, and number 2, have maintained an incidence rate of at least 50% below the average for its particular industry group. At this time, I'd like to recognize our wonderful HR Director, Janelle Galloway, who's going to formally introduce our Commissioner of Labor.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. It's my honor to introduce North Carolina's Labor Commissioner, Mr. Josh Dobson. Commissioner Dobson was sworn in as North Carolina's 18th Labor Commissioner on January 2nd, 2021, after serving 8 years in the State House of Representatives. Commissioner Dobson served as the Chair of the House Appropriations Committee and Chair of the House Health Committee. Prior to his service in the State House, he also served 2 years as a McDowell County Commissioner. Commissioner Dobson holds a Bachelor of Science in Social Sciences from Gardner Web and a Master's of Public Administration from Appalachian State. The North Carolina Department of Labor is charged by statute with promoting the health, safety, and general well-being of over 4 million workers across our state. The laws and programs that it administers affects each and every one of us. Employee safety is Commissioner Dobson's top priority, and it's my pleasure to welcome him here today to help us celebrate our departments and their commitment to a safe and healthy workplace. Commissioner Dobson, thank you for coming.
Well, what an, what an honor it is to be here, and I noticed that the agenda is long and y'all have a lot of, lot of things to get to, so I'll get right into it. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, County Commissioners, thank you all for allowing the Department of Labor this time to make these presentations. North Carolina is the 9th largest state in the country with almost 11 million people. We're the 15th fastest growing state in the country. And that's not by accident. There are policies and political norms that we have put in place in North Carolina, starting with counties just like Onslow, that's allowed us to be that type of state where people want to come to. And there's things we have here that make us unique and special. I've traveled this state for the last 2 years, and there's things that we have here that make us unique and special. Agriculture, I don't need to tell anybody here how important agriculture is to our state. The rule of law that we have here. Economic development, the commitment to economic development that county, county commissioners and county managers, just like you all, have committed to. Public education, I'm a, I'm a strong proponent of public education, and I can tell you, if not for public education, being an equalizer, there's no way that a poor boy like me from the mountains would be here before you as North Carolina's 18th Commissioner of Labor. So public education is important, and it's something that has drawn people here. And there's, I could go on and on, public health, healthcare, I won't for time's sake, but my point is, there are a lot of things that make us unique and special. There are a lot of things that make people want to come to North Carolina. But there's one thing that doesn't get the attention, that doesn't get the headlines of, of a new economic development project or a new addition to a hospital or a school, but it's no less important to that success we have in North Carolina, and that's workplace safety. If you don't have a commitment to workplace safety, then you can't be all that you could be as a county and as a state. So I'm here as North Carolina's Commissioner of Labor to say thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Madam Manager, I want to say thank you for your commitment to workplace safety and making it a priority, just like you prioritize healthcare or economic development or education or agriculture, any of those other things that make us unique and special. I want to say thank you for making workplace safety that type of priority. That's what makes us unique and special, and that makes us what we are as a state. So it's my honor to be here. I'm going to ask Kylie to come up, and we will make the presentations at this time of the different departments within Onslow County to receive those awards. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so first off, we're starting with the First Year Board Awards, which we go to.
Onslow County Government Health Department. Next, we have Onslow County, Onslow County Government Senior Services. Next up, we have for the second consecutive year, Onslow County Government Annual Services. All right, moving on to the fourth consecutive year, we have Onslow County Government Information Next, we have Onslow County Government Purchasing. Next, we have Onslow County Government Vehicle Maintenance. Moving on to the sixth consecutive year, we have Onslow County Government County Administration. For the seventh consecutive year, we have Onslow County Government Consolidated Human Next is Onslow County Government Governing Body. For ninth consecutive year, we have Onslow County Government Environmental Services. Next, we have Onslow County Government Library. For 12th consecutive year, we have Onslow County Government Tax Office. For 14th consecutive year, we have Onslow County Government Soil and Water. For 20th consecutive year, we have Onslow County Government Finance. Next is Onslow County Government Human Resources. Next is Onslow County Government Human Resources. Moving on to 26th consecutive year, we have Onslow County Government Board of Elections. Next is Onslow County Government Cooperative Extension. Next is Onslow County Government Museum. Next is Onslow County Government Register of Deeds. And lastly, we have Onslow County Government Veteran Services. And that concludes the awards. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much for the time. Thank you for your staff and your total commitment to workplace safety. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you, sir, for coming down and presenting those to us. Item five of Resolution 22018, supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans. Turn that over, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As part of a new initiative to show support for our veterans, the National Association of Counties and the National Association of County Veteran Services Officers have invited counties to join Operation Green Light and light their buildings green through November 13th. By shining a green light, county governments and residents will let veterans know that they are seen, appreciated, and supported. At this time, I'll read the resolution into the record. "County of Onslow, State of North Carolina, Resolution 22-018, Supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans. Whereas the residents of Onslow County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who defend our country have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by all citizens. And whereas there are approximately 700,000 veterans in the state of North Carolina, with over 42,000 of them being in Onslow County. And whereas studies indicate that many service members experience high levels of stress during the transition from military to civilian life, and some are at risk for suicide. And as a supportive military community, we seek to ease that transition. And whereas Onslow County appreciates the important sacrifices of our United States military personnel and wishes to honor those who have defended our nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners hereby declares October 3rd through November 13th as a time to salute and honor the service and immeasurable sacrifice of our men and women in uniform as part of Operation Green Light for veterans in Onslow County. In observance of Operation Green Light, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners encourages its citizens to display a green light in a window of their place of business or residence." Adopted this the third day of October 2022 by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners approve Resolution 22018, Supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans, and authorize the Chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion?
Motion approved, second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Here, none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Tabernacle lease termination, our county attorney will go over that for us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Onslow County, or Onslow Classic Soccer Association, buying through Jacksonville Onslow Sports Commission, has leased the tabernacle soccer fields from the county since 2004. Onslow County Schools has identified the tabernacle site as an ideal site for a new elementary school. County staff, as well as OCSA and JOSC, and the county school staff have worked together to identify alternative fields for OCSA to use so that the tabernacle site can be used for the new elementary school. All interested parties have agreed to terminate the current lease effective as of July 1, 2023, as opposed to the current expiration date of December 9, 2024. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider termination of the tabernacle lease as of July 1, 2023, and if approved, authorize the Chairman to execute the lease termination agreement. And I will note that Onslow County Schools has identified another site so that there won't be any interruption in the OCSA's soccer facilities."
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here, none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Here, none, motion carries. Rural Operating Assistance Program, I think Ms. Sherri Slater will present that to us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. This morning, I have before you the Rural Operating Assistance Program grant, which is the ROPE grant. This program is state-funded, public transportation, administered by NC DOT. The ROPE grant consolidates our elderly and disabled transportation assistance program with the employment program and the Rural General Public Transportation Program into a single grant package. Onslow County is eligible to receive ROPE funds this year in the amount of $247,945, and the allocation consists, again, of the EDTAP, the Employment and the RGP funds. EDTAP and employment are 100% state funds. The RGP is a 90% state, 10% county match, and that match is met with the existing OUTS budget. Our request today is that you consider, the Board consider approval of the grant and authorize the county manager to sign the documents on behalf of the county. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I just want to say one thing. A lot of people don't understand, you know, when you read something like this, it's just on the agenda, it's something that we have to go through, but this is an important program. Any of you all that have elderly people out in the Onslow County area, they rely on the transportation system to get them to and from their doctors, their appointments to the health department, and to get their medication from pharmacies, you know, located through Jacksonville. So, I think this is a big win for us, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to do that.
Thank you.
Any further? Here, none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Slater. Amendment to the SRO agreement, I think Sheriff Miller will be presenting that item to us. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an amendment to fix some technical problems. So I'll read it for the public. On August 1, 2022, Board of Commissioners approved an agreement between the Board of Education and the Onslow County Sheriff relative to the provision of school resource officers at Onslow County Schools. The agreement approved a total of 21 SROs. Following the approval of the agreement, it was discovered by staff that the amount contained in the agreement was listed as $1,618,382, which should have been $1,255,956.19. Commencing on January 1, 2023, Sheriff, myself, and the Board of Education have agreed to an additional eight school resource officers to serve at the elementary schools for protection of our young people and our staff, our school staff. So that the SROs are not splitting time between two schools, which is what's going on at this point. The additional SROs will cause an increase of $454,807.45 in funding from the Board of Education, and will be funded through a grant to be obtained by the Onslow County Board of Education. The proposed amendment has been drafted to memorialize the changes from the originally approved agreement, and there was a minor issue as well in the original contract pertaining to the address of the county government, which has been fixed. If approved, myself, the sheriff, will approve, will provide a total of 29 school resource officers to the schools as of January 1, 2022. And that's, the hiring process is already going on at this point. Onslow County Schools will pay the county a total of $1,710,763.63 in fiscal year 2022-2023, reflecting a net increase of $92,383.41 from the August 1, 2022 approved agreement. Commissioners, it's sad that we have to provide that kind of protection in our school system because we know what goes on in other parts of the country. We don't want it to happen here. We got to keep our kids safe and our educators safe as well, and the staff. Here, for any questions that you may have.
Motion to approve, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? I just, one question, that puts SRO in every school now?
Yes, that is our ultimate goal, to have a dedicated school resource officer in the schools that they get to know the children, they get to know the staff, they get to set the example for the young people coming up, and this is what we need, not only here, but in our nation as well.
That's all I have. Any further? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you, Sheriff, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item E is the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation Airport Grant. Mr. Chris White will present that item to us.
Morning, Commissioners. The Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation, or OLDCC, under the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, Pilot Program, has selected the Albert J. Ellis Airport Runway Rehabilitation Project for a grant designated to support the military's mission and enhance quality of life in communities around military installations. The project that was submitted helps to support the installation by enhancing and maintaining force mobility. It further connects visitors, residents, service members, contractors, visitors, vendors, and businesses to our region and beyond. The support, it also supports commercial air transportation, firefighting, flight training, fertilizing crops, delivering lifesaving medical transport, and law enforcement activities. These funds will be combined with the Federal Aviation, AIP, grant of $8,420,073 to fund this project. This grant was issued on September 21st with an acceptance deadline of September 23rd. An extension was requested but rejected due to the upcoming end of the federal fiscal year. This document required the Chairman's signature prior to the meeting to avoid the grant being withdrawn. The specific action requested is, we respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners ratify the signature of the Chairman on the DCP grant in the amount of $2 million, and if approved, authorize the Chairman or the county manager to sign the remaining documents on behalf of the county.
Your motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Thank you for applying for this and getting the airport where we can be more situated into getting heavier planes and getting more planes with more fuel to fly farther distances. So I think it's a good thing, and a lot of people don't realize that the airport is enterprise fund and it's no local tax dollars that goes into the airport.
That's correct.
So anyway, any further discussion or questions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Reimbursement Resolution, Ms. Lisa Martin, our interim finance director. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It is standard practice to have a reimbursement resolution in place before the start of a capital project. This enables the county to recover any costs incurred dating back 60 days from the approval of the reimbursement resolution. It should be noted that the county can recover soft costs, for example, architectural, engineering, and legal costs dating back to the inception of the project. The county will reimburse itself once debt is issued. The reimbursement resolution will cover the costs associated with the Northwoods Park Middle School renovations, as well as the acquisition, construction, and equipping and improving of a new elementary school. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the reimbursement resolution for the Northwood Park's middle school renovations and the new elementary school. If approved, authorize the Chairman of the Board to execute the reimbursement resolution on behalf of the county. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Motion?
Affirmed. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here, none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Budget amendments, Ms. Lisa, I think that's yours also.
Yes, it is, thank you, sir. It's my pleasure to present the following budget amendments for your approval. Items B20 and B21 reflect the changes made in agreements accepted and approved earlier this morning. Item B22 is a non-recurring aid for public libraries and is contingent on board approval and acceptance of the grant in a future meeting. Item B23 is an amendment needed to allow for the purchase of new computers for the 911 Center. And item B24 is a request to utilize DOJ's shared funds for the Airport Police Department. It is respectfully requested that the Board approve these budget amendments, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Motion to approve, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here, none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
May I add one thing before Lisa leaves? Can you come back up to the microphone? We would like to ask for the Chairman and the Board of Commissioners to also, on the reimbursement resolution, we need the clerk to the Board to be authorized to execute a reimbursement resolution. That's the way the financial documents work, and I think that the language that was just used was the Chairman was given authority. So if we could have that motion one more time.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. I'm sorry I interrupted, and I'd like to thank Lisa Marlin, who has served as our interim finance officer and has done an amazing job and has worked very, very hard this summer. She's staying on with us as deputy finance officer. We appreciate her leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Appointments, I'll turn that over to Ms. Griffin, but ballots, are we doing one at a time, or are we doing them all?
So, we're going to, we're going to have four ballots, and I will have Brett pick these up all at once, but I'm going to read these out for you, and you have a few minutes to consider what you're, who you're going to vote for on this. This appointment is for the Fire Rescue Commission. The Onslow County Fire Rescue Commission was created by this Board to oversee the volunteer fire departments and to really advise the Board of Commissioners on matters of our fire service. There are currently four volunteer fire department category positions with expired terms. The Onslow County Fire Chiefs Association met on August 25th, August 25th, 2022, and nominated the following individuals for your consideration. For seat one, Charles Fountain of Back Swamp Volunteer Fire Department, or Jerry Kip Williford of Nine Mile Volunteer Fire Department. Seat two, Raymond Sorrell of Half Moon Volunteer Fire Department, or Brent Cook of Richlands Volunteer Fire Department. Seat three, Toby Thomas of Verona Volunteer Fire Department, or Stuart Rochelle of Turkey Creek Volunteer Fire Department. Seat four, Joseph Williams of Hubert Volunteer Fire Department, or Timothy Brunz of Piney Green Volunteer Fire Department, or Jeremy Foster of Onslow County Fire Rescue. It is respectfully requested that through your votes, this Board of Commissioners appoint representatives to seat one and seat three volunteer fire department categories for two-year terms, which expire March 7th, 2023, and seat two and four, which will be two-year terms expiring March 7th, 2024.
I will say that these ballots are public record, and anybody that wants to look at the ballots and how the Commissioners voted, feel free to check with the county manager or the clerk, and you can get that information.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience. That took a little longer than it seems like it should have, but we do have a successful vote. The Fire Rescue Commission, seat number one, is Mr. Charles Fountain. Seat number two, Mr. Raymond Sorrell. Seat number three, Mr. Toby Thomas. And seat number four, Mr. Jeremy Foster. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to item seven, which was the consent agenda. Nothing was moved from the front. Item eight is manager's comment. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I do have a couple of announcements I'd like to give. First of all, and all of you have met him already, but our brand-new finance officer is having his very first day of work. He hasn't even been here for four hours yet. I'd like for you to stand up in the back so everybody in the room can see you. This is Mr. Andrew Prince. He's coming to us from the North Carolina State Auditor's Office. He has both bachelor's and master's degrees in accounting, and we are very, very happy to welcome him to Onslow County Government. Thank you, Andrew. We also have with us today our interim director of cooperative extension. We're very pleased to welcome Amanda Hatcher to Onslow County. And Amanda comes to us, we're sharing her still with Duplin County at this time, but we really appreciate the role that she's serving for us here in Onslow County right now. We'd like to voice our appreciation to both Jones Onslow and Duke Progress, who have resolved the 1,200 power outages that we experienced in Onslow County on Friday due to Hurricane Ian. I think we were definitely spared, and we are very thankful for that. I'd also like to announce October 20th at 3:00 p.m., as a reminder, our public safety memorial ceremony will be held here. And our Monster Bash Trunk or Treat will be October 29th at 5:00 p.m. at Onslow Pines. And that's all I have, unless you have questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to Commissioner comments, and I don't remember where I started at last meeting, but I guess we'll start with Royce on that side and go back and forth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for being here today. Congratulations on all the awards. We just kind of missed, had a close call with Hurricane Ian. We were blessed that we didn't have any loss of life and very little property damage. But I think it's important for Onslow County citizens to know that Onslow County is better prepared for an emergency now than we've ever been. Since Hurricane Florence, we've increased our emergency fund so that we have money available to help our citizens, and we don't have to wait for FEMA or insurance. We built fuel farms so that we have fuel available. We can continue to operate our emergency vehicles. We built new schools that serve as storm shelters with 150 mile-an-hour wind ratings and with generator backup. And we're expanding our emergency operations center so that we can better coordinate the efforts. I want to thank our manager and this board for always looking to the future to keep Onslow County safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott.
Okay, I just want to tell everybody thank you and looking forward to the holidays is coming up. Be, be safe. You know, we've been blessed, we've also been fortunate with this last storm. And I also want to say thank you to all the volunteer firemen that was up before we got up to go check our roads, to make sure that the trees and stuff were removed. And we certainly looking forward to the new board members of the Fire and Rescue. We need your input, and God bless you, be safe, and thank you for allowing me to serve.
Thank you. Commissioner Price?
Congratulations to the various departments that were recognized for the safety awards today, for a safe environment for everybody to work in. Last week, I was able to attend a Zoom meeting, which is not my favorite thing, but I enjoyed participating in this particular meeting because we, as the Steering Committee for Public Education, we got to talk about the various goals that would be considered for the Legislative Goals Conference. And so we got a chance to vote on those and worked our way through about half of them. So I assume we'll have another meeting to finish up the other half before the Legislative Goals Conference in November. Other than that, have a good afternoon.
Commissioner Knapp?
Just want to thank everybody for showing up today. I want to thank Commissioner Dobbins for coming down. What you saw today with all the departments being awarded is just a small indicator of the work that our county employees do day in and day out. And it was an honor for him to come down here and present these awards to the departments. All the department heads are working hard. I'm real proud of our county government. And I kind of segue that into two other things. You know, with Hurricane Ian approaching Florida, which is my home state, and I had some friends down there in Fort Myers that lost everything, I was kind of worried about that hurricane coming up here. But beyond that, it just reminded me of Florence and how well it was run by Norman Bryson, the emergency command post, and the EOC, and then how our county manager as well was always keeping us in the loop. You know, we sit here as Commissioners and we think that we just come to these meetings, but every day we are talking to each other via telephone or text or email about one issue or another, and probing each other's opinions as to where we want to be on a particular issue. And I can tell you, with Hurricane Ian, that was the same case. We were getting updates from Norman daily, sometimes three or four times through the day, keeping us informed on what we should do, along with Sharon contacting the Commissioners, getting with us. We declared a state of emergency, which we needed to do, and we did so rightly to get ahead of the storm. And fortunately, you know, God had different plans and kept the storm away from us, and I'm really thankful for that. So I appreciate everybody that participates on that EOC. Job well done. I can't say enough about you. And the last thing I want to talk about is that, you know, we've had a lot of ups and downs in the county, we've had some change of employees. And, you know, it's our job as Commissioners to oversee that. We oversee the budget, you know, as Roy said in his commercial, which was well done, by the way. He talks about all the things that we're responsible for as Onslow County Commissioners. And if you listen to his commercial, he's only hit on several things, but he hit on a lot of main points. And one of the things that we look at is we try to put the right person in the right job. And I can't say enough about one particular individual, I'm going to call him out right now, is Tony Paget. Tony Paget is, he's something else. He's been called on in the past. He is now our acting animal services director. We had a particular issue, I'm not going to go into details, that involved the sheriff's office as well with some dogs and some type of activity that was kind of suspicious, and Tony jumped right on it and took care of the issue very quickly. And I'm proud of Tony and what he does for this county, what he offers to this county, what he continues to offer this county, but not only as a commissioner, but as a personal friend. You know, he's there to give advice because he truly loves the county. And I just wanted you to get that recognition, Tony, because I don't think many people know you're the jack-of-all-trades, so to speak, and the history that you have here, being a former commissioner of Onslow County, being a native of Onslow County. I just wanted you to know that. I appreciate you, I appreciate our friendship, and I mostly appreciate your wisdom and guidance. So thank you very much. With that, I hope you all have a good day. We'll see you at the next meeting at 7 o'clock in two weeks. God bless.
Thank you. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you. Congratulations on our department heads and their public safety awards. And Tony, I don't have to say much. You and I have had many conversations, and one of the things, one of the biggest projects I know is the animal control, but the other one is the range. The Onslow County Sheriff's Department has its own range now, and thanks to you getting all that prepped up for us, and thanks to the sheriff and Colonel Thomas will be our next sheriff, and what they've done out there. It's nice to have their own facility. You know, I've been running the range out there at JPD for years, and it's nice for them to have their own facility now. They're the biggest agency, and it's good for them to have their own range, and it's great. Florida, we all have friends probably from Fort Myers. I do, a lot of us up here on this board do, and our prayers go out to them. Some of those islands are devastated. It's going to be amazing to see how long they can recover. Some of those islands might not never recover. It's going to be amazing to see what happens, but our prayers go out to them. Thank you for being here.
Vice Chairman Paul Stern?
Thank you, Chairman. We appreciate everybody coming out today and the recognition of the workplace safety awards, which we may not all understand the importance of workplace safety, but that falls right in line with our workman's comp insurance policies and everything else. So workplace safety, when you see what took place today, you see that's not just safety in the workplace, but that is also saving money when it comes to insurance premiums. So we appreciate those recognition and all the work that the staff does to make sure that we maintain that workplace safety. And I don't understand all these accolades people are giving to Tony Paget. I don't know who this Tony Paget guy is. But I'm glad he's working for Onslow County. A lot of them may not remember, but Tony also served in the capacity as commissioner and I think chairman at one point. He's been committed to Onslow County for all his life, and he's a lifelong resident, and he holds Onslow County near and dear to his heart like all of us do. And we appreciate what he does, we appreciate what everybody does. And be safe and take care.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I want to say and reiterate, pray for those people in Florida and South Carolina and some of the folks in North Carolina that was damaged by the hurricane. I've seen all kinds of nightmare-type interviews on the news where people not only lost their house, they lost their car, and they isolated on an island and can't even get their help. So whatever we can do as individuals, I think we can reach out to those folks and try to help them out if we can, and pray for them because they need it. Loss of life and loss of property, but just so much devastation. I think it's the biggest, most powerful storm that's hit the U.S. in, I don't know, maybe all of history, but that's to be decided by somebody else. I want to congratulate all the fire and rescue appointees tonight that got appointed. We appreciate all the other people that put their application in and didn't get appointed, but we need them. We need those people to serve as much as we can, and I hope they reapply for other positions down the road because of volunteerism. Do we, the state of emergency that we put in place, has it expired now?
It expired at 12:01 a.m. this morning.
Okay, I just wanted to let folks know that we don't have that still going. Amiga Jarman, you hid from me so I couldn't see you, but I was going by what you told me yesterday. You were supposed to have jury duty this morning. So you not only hid, but you told me you weren't going to be here. So anyway, always pulling surprises. Other than that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.